I unmuted. I'm muted.
No, you've got to mute us. Mute the microphone.
We have a section on public input. And maybe before we get to that, I know that I've received, I don't know, speaking for anybody else, I've received a bunch of calls about the concept of naming the school in the name. And I think my perspective on that is it's probably not something we should pursue any further. And it's not on the agenda, so if you'd like, maybe we'll just discuss that before we go out open to the public. It's just up to me, I'd say that was an idea that was thrown around, but if you didn't prefer. Anybody think otherwise, John? I don't agree.
Yeah, and I just would add that I had a nice kind of a digital conversation with Peter Kimball at the Bridge, and he was telling me about, you know, the nice piece that was coming up in the paper, which I read, and it was really helpful for someone that wasn't here during the gone few years. And I totally agree. But I didn't think that there was any further interest in naming the gym outside the board. The only thing we're really looking for now is to, I think, to have a nice picture of Dr. Bhagwanji in the, you know, outside the gym, near, maybe in the foyer, and with a plaque, and he can still work on the sign. But so I've had a couple of people say that they would either, you know, reach out to Dreamer or that, you know, Peter Kimball may have something, you know, in the archives that he could share. So that wouldn't be what we need to be doing at this point, so.
As a, as an alternate, I think Dave, no, there was, Dave Robinson suggested that we maybe seek people to sponsor the food, which I think we have done in the past. So there are alternatives, but.
Oh, sure.
So I think that's an extension, everybody here, that we probably could move on to a different topic and not believe that on any other, any public input.
You can chop off stuff?
No. Nobody, nobody's trying to give our attention. Moving right on to administrative reports.
So a couple of things I just need to edit in my report. The first one is, doesn't need an edit, but on your agenda tonight is a review of the Student Activities Fund's policy. The current policy we have on the book doesn't support some of the activities that the graduating class likes to do. You know, they do a gift, they pay for all their expenses, raise money for prom and graduation and different activities, and if they haven't money at the end, some of the classes want to use the remaining funds to set up, you know, an account for alumni activities. So we wanted to make sure our auditors picked it up that we were using it for alumni activities and it wasn't allowed for in our board policy. So the revision, we have told you, you'll see the part that we added that would allow for that activity. Other classes spend every last cent and they're happy to do it that way, but some would like to have a little nest egg to put their, you know, alumni activities. We can get to that when we're on the agenda. So since we last met, the town and the school ended up deciding to vote on the same day, Saturday, March 13th, it will be at the middle school from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. There is a House Bill 1129 that allows for us to use these alternative processes. I talked, in my board report, I have a draft timeline of activities that have to happen, virtual public meetings and such before the vote. And I talked to Jay Holden this morning, and there are a couple of things we'll have to change on that timeline. He's not available on Mondays because of work commitments, so having our first informational meeting can't happen on Monday, March 8th, because he could back it up to the week prior, to the third or the fourth. And that would allow the community to have a little bit more time to digest all that gets presented as far as the budget and warrant articles. So I don't know if you have a preference for the third or the fourth. Our information meetings about we can give people a little bit more time. The other thing that we have to change the week earlier, the activity before that is that we're mailing out instructions to the annual meeting to register voters. And I hope to be able to do that with Tom, because they have to do mailing as well. So if we can mail all of the ballots and all of the budget stuff together, I think that would be an efficiency. But I have it written down for March 2nd, and if we have our informational meeting on March 3rd or 4th, then we have to go a week or more earlier than our first meeting. So do you have a preference for Wednesday, the 3rd, or Thursday, the 4th?
Anybody? Anybody have a preference? Do you want to put a point for it?
Well, just pick one?
Yep.
How about Wednesday?
Well, I have a question about, I think it would be foolish to perhaps put a newspaper story or write a piece to put in to explain our articles to people that don't do Zoom and don't do all that stuff. So that would need to be done in late February, I guess, somewhere. Just one thought. And the other part is about the drive through voting from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I like to think I'm dedicated, but I'm not sure I can do that particular length of a shift and still be wanting to meet with people and talk to them. So I'm thinking maybe if we divvy that up, I think the school board should be present, answer questions, but. And we've got our next meeting in February that we can divvy that out, but I think that's probably not fair. That's a long day. Election people are, I don't know how to do that.
Right. And it'll be walkthrough voting, so that includes, we have some weather, I think there's going to be one way, one way in, there'll be four ballot boxes, with two for the town and two for the school. And yeah, I think giving you that schedule would be good, and getting information out to people who maybe aren't using, you know, Zoom and online information meetings is always a good idea. So I'll have to edit this draft, that's why I put draft on there. I don't know if there's anything else that you had any questions about? These are the things that we have to do to create a totally new alternative process. So the budgets, you have, go ahead.
Quick question. So last year we did a hypothetical, and I got that work to battle with like A through K and D through G. Is that something we could do this year? Was it helpful? And I also wonder, two ballot boxes, and now, or two for the town and two for the school?
So I think we just need to talk with the town about what worked for us, having been through this one, and how that kind of kept, you know, crowds from coming at particular hours, and I'll definitely share that with them. Anything else that seems to work well?
I'm just thinking that last year we did a drive through, so people staying in the cars, maybe chilling outside, having a way outside of systems in the hallway, so that might get a walk on.
No, that's good. We didn't turn anybody away. We tested anybody that named the systems come in the first, you know, four hours and then divide the alphabet, but if somebody had to come when it wasn't there, alphabetical turn, no one was going to be turned away. You're right, just to help with that control. So the budget subcommittee met, so Nate and Dylan and Dick and I met with Kathy. And after that, another behavioral administrators and did a further cut list, difference between the have to haves and the nice to haves. I want to put right out there that there are no proposed teacher cuts on our list. And we're still waiting to hear from the state and just to listen. She has money in the budget for next summer's compensatory services for students with disabilities, and we get more state funding for that, we'll be looking to track some of that out. The, I think we have it down to a 0.69% increase, which Kathy will let me know, but because of the reduced revenues from the state and our use of fund balance this year, we still have a significant tax increase that we want to be able to control. Put some information in there on the land purchase behind elementary school. Talked to the attorney, who's going to put up, put together a purchase and sales agreement contingent upon the vote of the voters. We are still waiting to hear about additional funding from the state, we're supposed to get roughly four times the amount we got earlier this year. We're waiting to get the funds, but we do know that we won't have to rush to spend it, like we had to the second round of funds, like spend by December. They'll have until September 22, 2022. So, yeah. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Land purchase part, according to the map, and I've looked at it, it doesn't, it's a little bit of a parking lot on the, on the back other side of that. Trying to think of Wilson Avenue, yeah. It's, and it's not even to where our drainage system is, it's really a very small piece of property, and I guess they use it, be very useful for them, access and garage lots. We'll have to look and look at it. The map's pretty good. So Kathy, you do, you want to run over your summary or?
You want to go over budget though?
Oh, sure.
Okay. So I handed out what I emailed you last week. So since we met last. I can meet, sit with Lori.
I'm gonna bring you a little table once again.
My work is fine right here, no?
That works.
So this is draft two of the budget. It's an overall increase from the current year's budget of about $85,000. And last couple of meetings, this proposed budget is $101,000 less than draft one. We included some of the reductions that your administrators discussed, or that we discussed at the budget committee meeting. So we did have some changes to salaries and benefits due to like health insurance changes that were no, are going to be coming next year, or people who changed, you know, moved on salary schedule. And also the principals taking a zero increase for next year. We had reduced negotiations expense, charter tuition rate came in. And then by school, you can see that I just listed the number of items that were cut back. So that equals about $101,000. Sabrina had asked last time, just expenses related to COVID-19 that we might have paid through the CARES Act money that we're having to absorb into the general fund budget next year. Right now, it's just that part time, the new custodial maintenance position. We did increase the time for custodial staff at Woodville Elementary, but we are currently covering that through the operating budget, so. Most everything else for COVID-19 is mostly like supply and return, so.
I are a professional with the middle school to teach the student, the teacher relationship, or student-to-student ratio, so I'll just, I'll probably give that back. Like the certificate survey we carried up, I like.
Yep, certificate survey with a lot of stuff to do.
Okay, so that would also be a two bucks, right?
Correct, but in theory, going back to the way we were, we would have a. So before we get into the tuition stuff, I did, I included again the worksheet that we looked at last month, but I just wanted to quickly go over warrant articles. And I listed them out here because there's going to be a number of them this year that we didn't, we don't usually have. So we're going to have the operating budget. And the one thing about the building aid money that we got, that we are going to divide over the length of the bond and off the bond expense for 19 years, it should be a warrant article. And I can either do a separate warrant article or I can incorporate it into the operating budget warrant article. So that's what I'm going to do, is kind of combine the two, so we'll see wording about building, use of building aid, we just have to get that on there. The Moran trust that Lori talked about, that will be back on there, just to clarify, one that was previously approved by the voters. Use of bond proceeds, interest revenue. So I just wanted to bring this up, this is, we had the two bonds, we put them in an investment account, and we pulled from them when we needed to pay for the building project. Over that life of that bond and using those proceeds, we earned about $104,000 worth of interest. That's sitting in that investment account that we need to pull back out of the capital project funding into the general fund, but we need to recognize that and have the voters vote that you could do a number of things with it. You can, what you can't do is you could not take your interest proceeds and increase because of your project. That's the one thing you could not do. You can use it for something totally different if the voters approve. What I'm suggesting is our wording for this warrant article be using it to reduce the tax for the current, current budget that we're approving. If we do that, that's a reduction of about 30 cents on the tax rate, so. We'll have a warrant article for support staff negotiations. We're going to put the retained fund balance warrant article back on there at 5% instead of 2.5% that we've been able to do in the past. This 5% retained fund balance will be effective June 30, 2022, not this current June. You'll have the land purchase warrant article on here, and. I just wanted to, you'll see those in draft form soon. I'm going to do up the wording and just say the RA to approve it. Put it in print. I included the tax rate, although our budget isn't that much, as Lori mentioned, and we mentioned last time, due to that one time extra money of $700,000 and change, and our first class, it got our tax rate right down this year, but it bumps it right back up next year, so. Any questions on that?
Kathy, in the past, we've never put the retained fund balance at five, this has never been voted on as a warrant article, that's always just been, always kind of voted on as a board. So is that necessary now to be a warrant article?
At one point, you as a board did vote to retain fund balance at 2.5% until you took it back. So at any time, you could say, I don't want to do it, and take that back, but you have to vote on it initially to allow the board to do that every year.
But we've never done it in the past with a warrant article?
It, it had been done way back when. Yep, so when I came on board, three of our districts had done it, or two had done it and three had, we had there.
So just to be clear, so we've been operating on a 2.5%, but you're suggesting that the town allows it to 5%? Is that just a change that's been recent, or is it?
Signalize that now. The goal is to be able to try to keep the tax rate level. It drives people crazy when it, when it goes way up, and then enjoy it when it goes down because you're using the fund balance. But then when it, try to level for the budget, you know, an increase of 0.69%, less than 1% when just retirement increases alone were $185,000. Never mind other automatic increases, so. But yes, the 5% will help us with emergencies, try to keep the tax rate level.
Go on to this one.
That's okay.
Well, it's, it's 2.5% of the total budget, what's a 2.5% out of? Because I mean, we've been retaining like $200,000 a year, and that's a lot of money, and we're able to spend that money. So to say to the town, hey, we want to now save, you know, retain 100,000 to 500,000, that we could spend any way we want over that timeframe, maybe that's not, I mean, it just seems a little, you know, I think that, I guess it needs a little further explanation, because as a taxpayer, I don't know if I'd want to give us a blank, you know, ability to just, hey, save $500,000 in fund balance and spend it at will. Because 200 has been, 250 has been enough, and we haven't really had to tap into that much and any issues, so. To just say, hey, we want to, you know, emergencies and stuff, I can see this being abused over the long term, and I'm not sure that I really think it's even necessary. Especially right now where we got a lot of warrant articles, and, you know, it's going to be confusing for the taxpayer, you know, I mean, for them to vote, and I think this is something that really should be explained, and honestly, I don't think it should be on this year. I really think we could wait till next year.
I would, I would probably agree with you, John, and have that, well, it might be a good idea. I don't think it's a good idea in a year where our rate is going up. Maybe a year when our rate's going down, but that, I, I don't think it allows the board to just spend the money at will, but I understand, I understand the concept.
It does, because once that money's retained, we could spend it, no, I mean, not at will, but we've been able to spend it as needed, is that?
We haven't, we haven't spent it yet.
No, we haven't, but it's been there, and we've been able, if we needed it, we could spend it, you know, on pretty much anything. I mean.
So it's for emergencies? So if we have specialized student with high needs, residential placement says, that would be where you would tap into that retained fund balance. That's for emergencies. So say you have something go wrong in one of your buildings, I have an emergency, you can tap into that money. If you do not end up using it, it goes back into that fund balance that you will, that you will, and you either retain it again next year or you give it back. So let me just back up, so first of all, the 5% allowing, going from 2.5% to 5%, just gives you that leeway, you as a board still get to vote every year. So I come to you, you don't have to retain any of it, you can retain all 2.5% or 5% or a portion of it. And we've had some districts do that as well. The 5% would go into effect June 30th, 2022, at the end of that year, not effective this year at all anyway, and would not have any, this would be you voting on it, not this summer, but next summer, to tell me from the FY, June 30th, 2022 balance, what, if any, you want to retain. The town actually gets to retain a whole lot more than we do. So for instance, the tax rate that got set in 2020 in December, they're currently retaining 7.46%. So that's just, that's about $967,000 that they have, that they, they are able to retain. And they get a much broader range to retain than we do. And so it's definitely not, it's something that you've already raised, and instead of going back to taxpayers or having an emergency meeting, it allows you to use that.
So that's the one.
We have the Special Education Trust Fund that we put money into, which we have 200 plus thousand, and then the Building Maintenance Trust Fund that we, for emergencies. So I, I'm going to make a motion that we do not put this on as a warrant article this year, because I think it's a little more complicated, I think there's a lot of them on there, and I think that it needs to be, the taxpayers need to have the opportunity to really understand what we're asking them to do in this circumstance.
I certainly agree that this is a tough year to explain, you have no interactive board to public meeting. Zoom, besides the fact that Zoom exists, I don't think it's effective at all. So you've got people out there that want to ask questions, a lot of them don't through Zoom, and then there's a huge volume of people that don't do computer anything. So I think you're disenfranchising a huge amount of our, so yeah, something new like this, I, you know, is there any downside to putting this off to another year?
Well, 2022 is supposed to be, as far as budget, we are supposed to be able to accomplish that issue, I think. But I'm sure we're going to be running into the issues of not having that extra funding from the state, and other things like that. I think at worst, you should leave it at 2.5, maybe, leave it at 2.5.
After not to 5%, I think, to not put money in there, because I think we're going to use, you know, they have it down as using the fund balance, 700,000 to reduce it. If we don't do anything now, we're not going to have that in 2022 when things are not going to be as good as they are this year. We've gotten a lot of money from the state this year, and, and still is going to get some more. Can we really say that we're going to get any money from the state in 2022? I mean, you know, this is a little ways away, and, you know, it's kind of.
Not a second for him?
That would be a no.
No, I, no, are you seconding his motion not to put it on this year?
I'm just saying that, I'm just, well, my thesis far.
You have a formal motion out there. So we need to either second it and continue discussing it or not, so. Does anyone want?
So three, is it still going to be the 2.5%?
We need the 2.5%, that's what's already going. Right, John's motion was to not up it to 5% this year, and to leave it as is.
I second that.
Isn't that correct?
Correct.
All right. So you second that. Sabrina, did you?
So if we had done this in the years past, could we have avoided what's happening this year to the tax rate? It just, I'm trying to wrap my head around.
No, it's a one year at a time deal, so what, what is, we're allowed to retain a certain amount of it by this, this, what we're voting on, not going to vote on as the case maybe. And it's only talking about the retained fund balance from one budget year to the next, and not carrying on year to year to year.
So it wouldn't come from this year for next year, I see now, okay.
We did look at the two big factors that are impacting our budget, it's not the spending problem, it's the revenue. It's not the spending problem, it's the revenue problem. And that just not getting that additional state aid that we got, the one-time state aid, is a two dollar and sixty-two cent portion of that tax rate. And then the other part is the fund balance. And Kathy put on there that, you know, this is for the first time, that we can't apply the fund balance and reduce the tax rate. People have to vote for the, for the budget, and then the fund balance can impact it later. But our anticipated fund balance will reduce the tax rate by two dollars and one cent, so.
If we use it all. Right, if we use the whole fund balance, we have to use the whole fund balance, right? We can carry that over. So we could use like part of it, like four hundred thousand to drop it, and then continue having part of that left in the fund balance?
Right.
Yeah, we are kind of discussing different things at this point. So any discussion relative to the motion? Sabrina?
I would like to know what the five percent, the amount, the financial amount that impacts.
I think a hundred and eighty thousand is what we've been retaining, so.
So, and just for clarification, if we don't put in the five percent retained fund balance article, does the two and a half percent stand? We don't have to deal with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so any other questions? That was, that was mine. Sabrina, you have a question?
One more last question. When was the last time we used that retained fund balance for emergency purposes, and what was it for?
You have not been here, you have not used it, so I don't, I'm not quite sure when the last time was.
Before you were here, Kathy, we never retained a percentage of the fund balance.
I both did vote last August that we did have some, the project here was going to go over, and we had some things that we just didn't anticipate. So you had voted, we had checked with DRA, and they had deemed that a hundred and twenty-five thousand you had voted on, you know, no more, could come from that retained fund balance if we needed to because of those repairs were in emergency, you know. We didn't end up having to use that because we had a fund balance, so.
All right, so we've got a first motion and a second. Any more discussion or move on to vote? In favor of John's motion? Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining? You're opposed, Dylan? And I didn't. You're opposed to it. You're what? So. So it's, it's a tie. All right, I will, I'll, wow, I'm a tiebreaker, I think this is a first. So as a tiebreaker, I would say that I would not put the warrant article in this year. So I would vote against it. Or for his motion, to clarify what I just said. All right, moving, moving on. Do you have any more, Kathy, to?
I just have a budget question, just, you know, point of clarification on the numbers then. So, Kathy, I'm looking at the, just want to be a hundred percent clear to the, really to every, you know, our taxpayers on this adequacy grant. So what did, if you're looking at what we're receiving, this is line, that's the first line of the second paragraph on the first page here. In eighteen, we received three point eight six eight million, and that stayed pretty much the same. Then it bumped up to four point two and twenty, then up to four point eight and twenty-one, and now it's going down to four in proposed twenty-two. Correct? And that's because we received a slight increase in twenty, a larger increase in twenty-one, and then they're pulling it back in twenty-two. And that's a hundred percent set in stone. There's, it's not going to be any last minute deals and, you know, they're not going to put any, so this is a hundred percent, we're going to lose the eight hundred thousand dollars in state adequacy grant money this year for the, for next year's budget. Okay? And that's where this increased tax rate would be coming from, even though the budget is a hundred thousand dollar increase from the previous year? Eighty-five. And out of that, this year's, the budget that's being proposed, how much of that is one-time funding?
So, out of the current FY twenty-two, the reduction of one-time money is that seven hundred and six thousand out of adequacy aid?
What about expenditures, you know, like that playground, you know, last year?
Oh.
Last year, we put money, the program at the elementary school, starting that up, there was a one-time expense, which should be coming out of this budget.
Yep.
But are there any other one-time expenses, one-year expenses that will not be in the twenty twenty-three budget?
We didn't, I think, twenty, for the twenty-two, we didn't put anything in for the, whatever we had put in twenty-one, the playground, the architecture. Oh, we did keep, oh, we did keep it in there.
For the younger kids, and the other one is equipment for older kids. And that was one-time money this year.
That's, that's fifty thousand?
Yes.
Couldn't that come out of the building trust fund?
It could.
So why couldn't we take that out of the budget to help reduce this budget, keep it even closer to being a level funded budget, but also bring the tax rate down another fifteen cents? So, which also, in the past, we've proposed a budget, which they're going to vote on, but we've also made it crystal clear that there is a retained fund balance that's this. There is a, you know, if you vote for this hundred thousand dollars and interest is this, and then if, you know, we take this fifty cents out, now we're going to be down to maybe a dollar fifty increase, not a, you know, so those, those things would all add and be substantial. So the actual tax increase wouldn't be that much. I mean, I'd like to take a second and probably figure that out. But those three things all would bring it down from the four dollar and sixty-six increase down to maybe a dollar sixty increase, something like that?
Staff negotiations warrant article, which will then increase it again, so. We'll definitely take out the fifty thousand playground and do that through the trust hearing.
And one other thing that we've done historically too is we've, in a bad year like this, funding, we've also approved, let's say, a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand out of the special education trust to offset some special education costs. And I mean, those could be, you know, whether that's, I got thinking about, and historically, we've used it the previous year, dedicated it to an expense. But I mean, we could also spend it this year and have that extra fund balance to put toward the budget. But I think it, I mean, for, to keep the paperwork clean, if we just said, hey, look, we could use a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand out of that special education trust fund to offset some of those costs, we could actually bring that down a little bit more. I know, and it's been before mostly, I think Dick was on the board last time we did that, but it, it was just a, it was a way to help out on a bad year.
One of the things I've written down out of that is the playground out of the building, building trust. So we would have to have a trust hearing on that whenever you want to schedule that, if we agree to this, and I think, I guess we should take a straw poll and see if we agree with it or whatever, but. So that's one item. We've already taken care of the fund balance item. And so do you want, do we, we feel we need to vote on the building trust concept, or? Anyone opposed to taking that fifty thousand for the playground equipment out of the building and trust? There's like two hundred and something thousand in there, right? Two thirty-two. So is there anyone opposed to using some of that money for the playground instead of using taxpayers this year? Anyone opposed to that? We have to have, yes, we can, we have to have a building trust, we have to have a trust fund hearing, but we can do that at any meeting coming up, at any time. Two eighty-two, well, now it's going to be two thirty-two.
So I'd like to make a motion that we use a hundred thousand dollars out of the special education trust fund to offset special education costs in fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
What, what's the balance on that?
Two hundred and eighty-two thousand is in the special education trust fund.
So they all, and I'm not disagreeing, but I think, just to remind some of the newer members, the purpose of the special ed fund is that we have in previous years had students that have cost as much as three hundred and seventy thousand a year. And, you know, not, not would it doesn't happen, but if one comes along, that can hurt a lot. So that's why that, I believe that's why that fund exists. So, you know, do as we will, I just want to make sure everybody understands the purpose of it. Go ahead, John.
Yes, but we'll also still have a hundred and eighty-two thousand in there. Plus, we would have an opportunity to have a, to add fifty or something at the district meeting, but I don't know that we would, but we could vote to have that added in. And if we have a two and a half percent retained fund balance at the end of the year, we're going to have another hundred and eighty thousand emergency money. So in theory, we'd have the three sixty plus for worst-case scenario student, I mean, unless we get a barrage, I mean, it's just, it's just a nice way to soften the cushion to blow of this, you know, dip we've been on.
Right.
You know.
Can we use the retained fund balance for special ed emergencies?
Okay, so, you, you did, and nobody seconds it, I'll second it. So Sabrina seconded, that'd make it look better to Nina. So the motion is to use a hundred out of special ed to help the special education trust to defray some of the costs for special ed this year, this coming year. Any questions about that? Everybody get it? So any discussion? Being none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
I missed a discussion.
Say again? Oh, okay, thank you. And if we're going to do that one, do you want to do one for the building? We just mentioned a fifty thousand dollar reduction.
But that's not going into cover or line, if that's being removed from the budget, and then later we'd have a trust fund hearing to take the money out to go toward that project.
That's a good point. Does that work?
Yeah.
All right, we'll leave that the way it is then. Perfect. I like that. Thank you when everybody nods in agreement there. Okay, anything else, Kathy, or? All right, well, thank you very much.
Question for clarification. So on the draft number two, it talks about using an estimate seven hundred thousand dollars to decrease the tax rate by two point zero one dollars. Is that, do we need a motion? Is that automatically calculated into this draft?
Let you know that in the current year projection that I had given you last month, we're looking at a fund balance of about maybe seven hundred thousand dollars that we could possibly put back onto next year's budget, the one we're talking about, and reduce the tax rate by the two oh one. We don't need to vote on that right now, it's early, you know, it could fluctuate a lot between now and June, but I just wanted you to know that that is definitely a possibility, so.
That'd be great.
So just have two budget questions still, Kathy. The first one, did we end up carrying over the money that was, because last year, we put money in, just to go back, for the middle school athletic fields, there was never the money budgeted to maintain with the grub control, the reseating. Did we carry that over like we said we were going to? You know, we put money in, we used, I think, some fund balance last year to do that, and then we said, well, we need to keep, put that in, that's in the budget this year?
Actually, if you look under grounds.
It was added to that.
We increased it just for that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, that's, and then the next question, I, it's just, it's a small thing, and it's only something that's been brought to my, you know, only because I'm involved in it. But I, I've noticed with, it's an athletics thing, and we have a ski team at Woodsville High School, if anybody didn't know that. And I mean, and I make, my daughter skis in a higher level program with Frank, when he has ski clubs, so I'm exposed, I get, I'm at the mountain a lot, I see what's going on. And it seems like our, our ski team isn't funded very well. Because, you know, we have a big gym for basketball, we've got athletic fields for, you know, for soccer. And skiing costs money too. You know, you've got lift tickets, you've got training space and, you know, time. So I just, I don't know what the funding is for it, but I don't see anything in the budget, and I'm curious what the funding is for it, and maybe someone could, you know, talk with the athletic director and talk with the ski team coach and find out what we have, if it's enough. I mean, I know that transportation's been an issue as well for the ski program, but if we're going to have a program, and I see this from experience, because I'm over at the mountain all the time, and, you know, Profile and Lynnwood and Sun and all these other schools, they, they have a lot more than we have, and they're doing a lot more for their kids. And if we're going to have a team, and we're going to ask our kids to participate in that team, we ought to give them the respect to do, give them an equal opportunity to the other schools in our division, if possible. And I'm not, like I said, I don't know a hundred percent what it is, I just know what I've observed. Thank you.
I ask one more. So I'm just trying to understand this, and maybe I'm not gathering all my thoughts correctly. So on the draft number two budget, it talks about it being an increase of eighty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, which represents a point sixty percent increase. My question then becomes, but the tax rate increase is four dollars and sixty-six cents. So can you talk me, I mean, I have a whole packet, can you just talk me through a little bit about that? Because I think, to everyone's point, I think we're going to have to be really clear with the tax, the town and our taxpayers, that we're asking for almost five dollars. And even with the seven hundred thousand dollars, which is where I was going earlier, I mean, we're, even if we get that two dollars and one cent decrease, we're still looking at a three dollar increase, which appears to me hasn't ever been the case in, over the last five or six years, of that much of an increase. Now, could you kind of explain that to me, so we can appropriately reflect that in conversations with our community?
I think that what I've always done is take the very first page of that one, and the very top number is our tax rate. That's our tax. And then you look down, and the, the big numbers that are bracketed going down is adequacy aid, you'll see we're eight hundred and, over eight hundred thousand dollars less on adequacy aid, so that's half of your increase right there. And, yes, that's half of your increase. And the very bottom one is that at present, we're not planning to use any of the fund balance in this budget, where we have in the past. So there's nine hundred thousand dollars reduced. So those two numbers right there is, that, that's the whole increase. So if, if we can, there's not much we can do about the adequacy aid from the state, but the one on the bottom, we do have some, am I saying this this well, Kathy? Okay, you're looking at, yeah, okay. So it's, at the end of the day, the fund balance is the one we have some control over, and that's, that is what we're talking about, trying to use a little more of, and if we can use seven hundred, that's close to what we've, you know, we've almost got it all back to what we used in the past. So, you know, there's some hope.
In conclusion, we're looking at between a million and one point seven million dollars being in the deficit.
Yeah.
Eight hundred thousand plus nine hundred and twenty-three thousand is one point seven. We put seven, if we put the whole seven hundred thousand in there, we're still around one point.
Well, you know, there's some numbers up above that are in the plus, like tuition, tuition rates from other school districts are up tremendously, and I think that probably is the King Street program can take more. Hopefully, that's why. That was our intent when we gave them more space. So those two numbers are, so it's, you know, those two aren't, those are two negatives, and we have some positives that offset those. And so, you know, one point six is the total change. those are two negatives, and we have some positives that offset those, and um, so, you know, one point six is the total change in the tax rate, one point six million, which is huge. Eight hundred of it is reduction of money from the state. And and then it remains to be seen what the fund balance, so, you know, let's, let's throw out, for example, if we get seven hundred thousand in the fund balance, it brings our tax increase to less than a million, so. And at least, I don't, I'm not saying that like I'm happy about that, but I'm just, you know, trying to put it in perspective.
Still a lot of money when we're not making any significant changes.
Sure. John?
Yeah, I guess historically, we have said that the fund balance is gonna offset some of the increase. Why have we determined this year to not um, you know, say, you know, because Kathy's projecting seven hundred thousand, we could probably guarantee half of five hundred thousand of that, and say that five hundred thousand is gonna be used to offset this increase. I mean, we've done that.
Yeah, let's ask, let's ask Kathy what she thinks of that. Right here.
Um, since I've been here, we haven't done my, any more than two hundred thousand. You know, I'm super conservative, so it um, I hate to put it in print and make promises. You know, it's it's six months away, so um, you as a board can do whatever, and knowing that we may or may not have all of that. Uh, so when we, let me just back up. When we look at that use of fund balance line, normally um, we don't put anything in there per se. Um, and that number comes to light i- in September when we revise revenues, when I know that I've closed the books and we've got that to bank on. Um, and that's when that number shows up here. So like for the current year, we didn't actually budget that we were gonna get the nine hundred and twenty-three, so um, we can definitely do that. So in FY twenty, we did put um that, you know, two hundred thousand, we thought was safe number to put in there. We can definitely put whatever you want in there, just knowing that that, that's a very fluid number.
So your estimate in in draft two is that we're estimating an approximate seven hundred thousand in there. And I certainly understand your perspective of not putting it in print and then having that come back on you. We've seen budgets not do well in the past, so. I I don't know, it's up to the board what they want to say, but I I I think being conservative is smart, you know. You don't want to overstate something and then have it come come back at you.
Makes sense, if you get to that point, like you said, when you go exactly where your expenses and everything, you all of it, maybe app or decide whatever you want then.
Right.
You know, make it a little easier forward going for the next year as well, because we don't wanna use it all off the zero and then next year, so we don't, we don't have any fund dollars, we don't have any really offsetting things, we like you to um, you know.
So John, we kind of left you hanging there. You you made a point, and then we're kind of like.
No, I was more just asking if I missed something, like the logic behind that, you know, whether um, because I do think that proposing a budget of this kind of increase has a, you know, especially with a drive, you know, a lot of chance to talk about it, really, it's got a high probability, you know, or a probability higher than normal of possibly being voted down. And if you're looking at, I guess, how would that even work in a drive-through voting situation? Because in a live vote, you, would you, so you'd have to propose another budget with a cut, and um, so if it gets voted down, then we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and have another drive-through voting for another budget.
And 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 now you feel Oxbow's pain.
Right, right.
They've at least done it four times, I think. I don't know if they've finally got past that or not.
So I, I don't know, you know, I mean, like I said, historically, we have, you know, um, in years similar to this, you know, said, hey, we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna guarantee, you know, whatever Kathy feels comfortable with, whether it's three hundred, four hundred, or five hundred thousand. I know you don't feel comfortable, you feel comfortable with two hundred, but I mean, how strong is your seven hundred thousand? I mean, you said seven, you know, I mean, is that a pretty solid seven hundred, or is that a, oh, you know, I think for you to say it's seven hundred, it's probably a pretty solid seven hundred. So it's a lot of that adequacy grant money that came in that we didn't spend, the reason we have it.
So so somewhere in between these two concepts, you know, I always like to try to find something in the middle, and you know, what if we put four hundred in there? And it turns out to be seven, nobody's gonna be upset about that. Um, but that would help. Does that sound like something we should do?
I'd make a motion, I'd make a motion that we um put it out there that we're gonna put guaran- try to guarantee the four hundred thousand dollars of retained fund balance to go toward offsetting the twenty twenty-two budget. And then when we get to that time, if there is seven hundred, well, we can put the seven, you know, more toward it. Um, but in the same breath, I would also like to say that maybe we shouldn't do. Well, okay, I'll just leave that as a motion then, without going too.
So second to that, anyway. Any, does any more discussion on that? All in favor of that proposal to put four hundred in on that line? Did you have something? Okay. Uh, okay, um. Yeah, anybody, any more discussion on that? All in favor? Anyone oppose? There you go. That that helps a little.
Well, I'd just like to make the statement.
And it's, even if it's, you know, even though we know we're gonna probably do even better than that, it's helpful.
Right. So if you take the hundred thousand in interest, the fifty thousand out of the budget for the playground, and the hundred thousand from the special ed, we're up to six hundred and fifty thousand, which is almost this, you know, the two dollars and whatever change that Kathy had put in at seven hundred, right? So we're basically gonna reduce that by almost half, but.
Oh, my. Okay, so um, I I think I can clarify. The the motion is to um, in the proposed budget, um, the last line under revenues is uh, use of fund balance. At present, um, prior to the motion, it had a zero in that line. And um, but yet, we had good reason to think we might have as much as seven hundred thousand we can apply to that. So the motion is to put four hundred thousand dollars in under use of fund balance for the proposed budget two thousand and twenty-two. And it passed unanimously, by the way.
I just, Kathy puts a lot of great info on these sheets, and I just draw your attention down to, you know, previous years, the amount that was but voted on at the March meetings. So in twenty FY nineteen, in twenty eighteen, the original budget voted on was um, the total tax was for twenty-three, and in the last two years, we went down. And then like last year, twenty dollars and seventy-five cents was voted on, but because we applied fund balance, it was two oh six less even, so um, that's, that's, that's really good information about kind of what Kathy does, which is we vote on on the budget, and then we're able to apply fund balance. So our budget would actually be less than it was in twenty nineteen. We've just realized two years of significant decreases in tax rate.
Yeah.
And everybody's happy.
We knew last year when when the state was giving us so much adequacy aid, I mean, it was stated several times that uh, this is great this year, and next year people can be grumpy. We understood it then, so there's no, there's no surprise here. I have one question, I might, the Morin Trust, this is have you already written that? Is is, have the lawyers come up with something with that family so that we can get the full amount?
So they're they're putting finishing touches on it. I think a couple of years ago, was it last, two years ago? Um, that we had a warrant article for two hundred and fifty thousand, but since then, I think it's more money.
Yeah.
So they want to um, clarify the language about up to, you know.
Do we have to put a limit?
It's returning interest.
Right.
So up to um, certain amount, and the way that uh, it will be held in trust and how it can be spent. So they just want to the attorney for the Morin Trust just wants to make sure that it's handled in the inten- the way it was intended, which is to improve map construction.
Be able to see a draft of that before.
Oh, yes.
Super good. Thank you. Wow, all right. Well, that was the fun stuff. Mr. Chase, do you have anything you would like to add today?
Um, I'd just like to draw your attention to the two surveys that I did, uh, the first with staff and the second with parents. We had thirty-two staff members respond, and a hundred and ten parents respond. And basically, the questions were being asked was the preferred means of delivering instruction during the second semester. Um, and it looks like approximately two-thirds of teachers and sixty percent or so of parents would be in favor of us opening the high school um, four days a week, or I I I had it in here, it's four and a half days a week. But basically, what we're proposing is the school be open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, with a Wednesday remote day. Um, I, just from a personal opinion, I think we hit the tipping point where our safety protocols, which we've gotten very good at, which we feel pretty good about, but we're not seeing much uh, educational growth out of the students. Students are struggling with this, both on a um, academic and on an emotional level, and I will tell you that the teachers are as well. It is extremely frustrating to try and teach a class and only see your students forty percent.
Yeah.
So it's it's strictly a hard decision, but I wanted to bring you this information. I have pages and pages of commentary. I only gave you um, appealing for some of the good and bad comments that were there, but there were seventy-five comments, I believe, out of a hundred and ten.
Wow. I I I have to say that I I, it's one of those things, one of the two things I've had in the last week that I've read more than once. And uh, I I find the comments all over the place on in both directions, complete extremes. The, I don't know if everybody has access to this, these surveys, or whether we should even perhaps publish them somehow, or um, but, you know, the first one from parents, we are mistaken if we believe that keeping students out of school for two and a half days is providing a level of safety for students and faculty. They're gathering without regard the social distancing when they're not in school, and and you can see stu- groups of students walking throughout on any, walking throughout town on any given day. The next one says, is is a little bit more in tune to full reopening, but saying maybe we should wait until the vaccinations are completed and and cases start to drop, which is, that strikes a chord with me, I. But one comment, and I underlined it last night, and I, it just, it made my head just shake, I said, many community members feel that no thought was given to how it would affect parents and their children. And I'm like, are you kidding me? Do you listen to our meetings? Have you heard what we talked about? I'm like, ah, just, ah. John, go ahead.
So, uh, Principal Chase, previously, you had um, said one of your, you know, you were working toward trying to implement a plan of opening four or five days a week at the start of the new semester. What days the new semester start on?
Starts on January twenty-fifth.
January twenty-fifth? So the the semester ends on the twenty-second? Okay. Now, Laurie, not to circumvent you, are you guys proposing then that we reopen on the twenty-fifth? So would you like a vote, a motion, a vote from the board to open four days a week? Is that what you're?
So up, around the SAU, um, even in the village schools, they're moving towards even the four and a half days, but, you know, I think four days is is a good a good next step. You still won't get all the students, because those families that feel really strongly about this have been telling us since last summer what they were going to do, and it and it really hasn't changed. And Mr. Chase and the staff at Woodsville High School have been bringing many students in for four days if they've been at risk um, for for not passing classes. So I don't know how many roughly that is, Eric, but we have been so that, you know, that's a good percentage of of kids that are, they're coming in, they're trying to help, and then they have a number of other uh, plans in place to try to help kiddos who are, who have fallen behind this semester.
Well, I'd make a motion then that we open Woodsville High School four days a week, starting for the January twenty-fifth um, new semester start date.
No, we're gonna continue discussing after the motion is made and has been made and seconded, and before Don asked his question, I I missed one. And and I don't fully understand it. On the last page of uh, Mr. Chase's report, again, under parent comments, it starts out, sixty million school-aged children were affected by a decision that was wrong. Everybody understand what decision we're talking about?
Hybrid. I think they meant the hybrid model, where kids weren't in school.
I mean, I, we don't, what schools are they, who made that? Is that something they?
I think she was talking about.
We didn't make one that affected sixty million kids. Pardon?
Across the country.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it just, it's, I didn't quite understand whose decision they were talking about, so I'm just curious if anybody understood it. I understand that the whole, I I think the fact, the the thing that hurt the kids and will hurt them for their future, and I fully agree with the fact that harm's not, I don't think it was the decision, I think it was a virus that kind of rephrase it, and I just couldn't quite wrap my head around them. Okay, so motion was made, sorry, sorry to belabor that.
Okay.
So um, motion's made to resume four days on uh, January. Okay. Um, so, Don, did you have a, something you wanted to?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not seeing here, but I thought.
I saw Laurie's report, there was, it was like twenty-six teachers and a hundred and thirty-two students that were quarantined, or I didn't quite understand.
Probably one of the school reports, um, with data from the nurses about while they had any positive student cases, they have had two staff cases that were positive. You know, a lot of close contacts, a lot of symptoms, a lot of quarantining, um, and we have never got up. It's been very difficult for feeling what you're feeling, especially with parents have been really um, wonderful about quarantining when they have, when kiddos have to quarantine. I can't, I can't say that enough.
So I think they did find it in the principal's report, it says staff excluded from school twenty-six, so that's over the last three months.
That's been, that's since September.
Just for December. Oh, this one was twenty-nine. This is uh, this is Mr. Phillips, sorry.
So that's, that's since the beginning of the year. And and a hundred and fourteen students, but that doesn't reflect COVID cases, just that there's been some exposure and that kids have been asked to stay home?
Totally got a cough and runny nose. Any fever, any symptom.
And is that, is that a hundred and twenty, I mean, is that a hundred and fourteen days or just a hundred and fourteen students?
It's, a hundred and fourteen students have been identified. I didn't say they were different students. Some students have been identified several times, but basically, if you go into the school nurse's office and complain about a stuffy nose, a runny nose, a cough, a fever, a stomach ache, diarrhea, virtually anything except an amputated limb, you are needing to go home until you can be cleared for um, not being COVID positive.
And that's, that's ten days now, or does it, are they gonna?
It's now ten days, yes. Or they can get tested in return.
And there's only been two, two incidents of?
Two staff.
Two staff, no students.
Correct.
Yeah, it's amazing, isn't it?
And the staff were, did they get better? I mean, were?
I'm sorry?
Is the staff okay?
Yes, they are. Thank you.
I think going forward, if um, somebody has an amputated limb, they should be allowed to go home. Just, just to throw that out. Okay.
So the the vaccine isn't available readily right now, but if it were to be ahead of schedule, what are the legalities of requiring that our students receive that vaccine? Is there, would we not be able to do that?
You don't know that we can require it, even even of employees. And our school nurses have all received the vaccine, and I'm really happy about that, and um, educators, I have been moved up to phase two A, which may happen sometime. And educators have been moved up to Phase Two A, which may happen sometime. Is it the, I don't know, February, late February through April? And I think just for New Hampshire, it's been a matter of getting the supplies that have been promised to help move things along.
You're saying May for kind of the, the general population, which that's more towards the end of the year, the school year, and I, I don't know. Heard immunity, and I'm just feeling like that's important. It's just not there yet, I'm feeling.
My impression was there, the rollout, and I've, I've been very involved in it, and, and we may even be able to set up a point of dispensing here in town. We've, we've got one we're doing on the twentieth of January for first responders at a fire station. And it's interesting to watch the dynamic, because when you, before, before the vaccines were almost here, so it was fifty-fifty wishy-washy, I'm going to take it not, and as it gets closer, more people are starting to get excited about it, and, and out of, only got two people aren't signed up for it. So it's, it's, it's an interesting dynamic, but I think the fact that there's virtually no after effects, or, you know, I think that's changed people's minds. Yeah, it is. John?
Just have two points to add into the, you know, we, Plymouth High School has been open five days a week since the beginning of September, and they've managed, they've had no issues within, that I'm aware of, within the school, you know, maybe they haven't had, you know, they handle case by case, they haven't had to close down, if I'm not mistaken.
They had a lot of cases and a lot of closures.
Well, what do you say is a lot? Because my understanding is they've had twenty max. But.
I suppose, I did, but you're right, they have been open for five days, and they do handle it swiftly.
But I think that's without every, I'm not sure a hundred percent on the numbers, but I mean, you know, I, but the point is, is they're, they're making it happen in there in a, you know, area that's a lot, and there's a lot of other school districts that are making it happen, and they're doing it. And, you know, like Mr. Chase said, these, we're getting better at all the things we're doing, and we haven't had, you know, this is really an important, I mean, because this goes into the next thing that we've talked about at previous meetings. We don't know what the long-term impact is going to be on our kids, you know, by keeping them out of school. And I think that's a little bit, when I reread that last comment, I mean, it might have gotten a little, you know, confusing in it, but the, I was talking with a family physician the other day, you know, and just talking about this and kid, and she had the same concern, you know, that we don't know what the long-term impact's going to be on these kids and their work habits, and, I mean, the kids need to be in school as much as possible, and we can't wait till May. And I mean, if we have a problem, we'll address it when the problem comes up. And we just came through the holidays, and we're still, you know, we're back in, and, you know, things are still pretty in the, in our town and even in our county. And people are trying to do the right things, and we need to keep our, get our kids back in school as much as possible.
But it's because of those strict measures that we've put in place that we've maintained such a high level of, or low level of cases. I think it's because of these tough measures. I think that being proactive is really important here. And I think that so, social and emotional issues are so important, and they, they are important. And I think that educators and the, the, the country recognizes that that's going to be a huge issue after this is all over. But I think, again, immediate problem is COVID, and I think that that's what we need to focus on right now. Unfortunately, I wish that we could fix both of these problems at once, but I think you have to weigh them. That's just my opinion, and I know that there's a lot of people that disagree, and that's, that's okay.
Well, here's what I, like, I think our issue is that we've been going with half measures for a long time, and I think a lot of schools and a lot of districts have gone with half measures. I can't give too many details because I'm not, you know, comfortable with what I'm allowed to say, or not in this specific situation, but in the month of December, I experienced a situation where one person who works pretty much with a, several hundred people, she's a, this person's an H R person, and she sees everybody on this, within a large group of people. Also, probably the one person that followed every single rule about P P E, distancing, hand washing, sanitizing everything to a T. Out of everybody in this group of people she works with, the only one I would say that followed it exactly as it was written, contracted COVID in December. Luckily, came away with it, without, she ended up being asymptomatic, but tested positive, you know. Says to me that the only thing that really prevents this is distancing and staying away from people. If I had it my way, I'd say we go back to full remote. I know that if I actually recommended that, I'd be strung up on my toes and beaten by half the people in the town. The half measures are practically useless, you know, and what they are damaging to is, again, mental health and the stability of the people. You know, the, the evidence so far has shown that this virus is not dangerous to school-aged children. So, sounds sort of backwards, but luckily, we can be, you know, we don't have to consider the safety of the children at this point. The real consideration is the safety of the adults they speak to and they see, you know. But, again, it's affecting them as well, having them home, and whether they're here two days a week or four days a week, they're getting the same exposure, you know. The masks make us feel comfortable, but, again, using this one person as an example, wearing a face shield, double mask, still contracted COVID.
But you, you don't actually know where this person contracted COVID, but I, I would. Yeah. You, we don't follow this person every minute of every day.
Right.
And, and it may not have happened when she was, he or she was being.
Right, exactly.
Could have been, but a moment of carelessness that somehow just got.
Exactly, yeah. No, and I'm not saying that the P P E and all these things don't help prevent it. They certainly do, you know, it's certainly a significant impact, but when you're looking at, again, school-aged children, to expect that they're following all the rules to a T is foolish. They're not. The minute you turn your back, they have their mask off, I guarantee it. You know, and, I mean, if you knew one, two, three, four, five of us, six, seven of us in this room were teenage boys at one point, you know how well they follow rules. You have a couple teenage boys, you know. Teenage girls are a little better, but, you know. But, uh, or, yeah, well, they're thought to be, I don't know if that's the reality, but teenagers in general, especially when you're looking at high school level. I don't, I don't see the half measures are really useful at this point, so I would support four days a week. Because it's either, again, my first choice would be full remote, but that's unrealistic. I don't support half measures anymore. I think four days a week is reasonable.
My, my question would be, two questions. One, for reference from Lori or a recommendation by Lori as to what she thinks the pros and cons are. That's number one, to put her fully on the spot. And two, if the principals could identify those areas of weakness in the execution of the safety measures that are being taken. I mean, I saw one, for example, I saw one comment that said, "As soon as the kids get in the bus, it takes their masks off." Now, obviously, they're not in school at that point, but, yeah, the, I would feel more comfortable with the four days a week. And I have to say, I've changed my, my drift on this quite a bit as well. But if there are, we're just looking at the number of days. I'd like to hear if there are other things that we can do to make it a little safer for the kids that where there's weaknesses. And then finally, how compliant the kids are actually being from what the principals have seen. I think that's three questions.
So you, so did you catch all three of it? And, and one, and I'm not sure the one about the buses, but that was a concern of mine as well. As in, in, in what we've read for tonight's meeting, we're reading that kids get on the bus and then they're, that, that doesn't work for me at all. I mean, if you're on a bus, you're actually more proximal to one another than you probably are anywhere else, unless I'm missing something.
Was, was that the first question? I didn't hear what the first question was. I'm sorry, Don. I, I still can't hear you. It's these things.
She suggested it, Don.
Oh, I, I just wanted to hear your, your view of whether we should do the four days. They're saying you were the one that suggested it.
I think, yeah, I think so. I mean, looking at the data and looking at, you know, the kids' performance in school and the, the four days makes the most sense. The, the remote day has better attendance than the distance learning, because right now, if you attend school Monday and Tuesday, you have remote with your teacher, and then Thursday, Friday is distance learning, where there are assignments on the Google Classroom that kids complete independently, and they can get support and ask questions if they, if they need help. And a lot of kids are not tuning into that independent part. And this model would do away with that distance learning part and get, have more time in school, which I think kids do better, for the most part, in school. I had, I had the tale of two first-grade parents last week. One of them called and said, "My child's in the V-Lax first-grade program, and I, I, it's not working for us, so I'm going to pull her out of that and go into homeschooling." So we processed that. The very next parent, "I'm a parent that has a first grader in the V-Lax program, and she loves it. She's doing super well with it." You know, and the fourth grade sibling was not, was going to come back to school. So it's just, there's no one-size-fits-all model. We think kids that need to be in school and can be in school should be in school. And those families that are able to support their kids this year during this craziness via, you know, V-Lax or Khan Academy or, or home, home education, most of them have said, "We'll be back. We'll be back next year when this is all passed." So I do think this is the best move for the high school at this point. The bus, we, I mean, as we make announcements to families, we will still encourage people to provide as much transportation as they possibly can, because we don't want to load those buses with too many kiddos. I've only had one complaint in the whole S A U about the windows being open to crack, because that's one of the strategies that's meant to help the air quality in the buses, to have some airflow. Just, you know, one, just thought it was too cold, so we've moved that student to be right on top of the heater to identify the wheel. So it's, it's not insurmountable, but we, you're right, we can't pack those buses. And Mr. Chase does have a couple, you know, he's identified a couple of places where they've had to make some adjustments with the idea of kids coming in. You want to address that, lunch and those kind of things?
Um, we have different locations for some of our larger classes. The, the school library is going to wind up being closed down two periods a day, because we need this space to teach our, our, our larger classes. The cafeteria, which isn't used other than lunchtime, is going to be used as a classroom space for at least three different classes. And in some of the lab situations, like Dr. Morosco's business lab, it's very similar to what you're, you're, you're sitting at right there. We have the dividers between the two, but they are going to be arm links from each other, simply because that's the only way you can set up the computer station to do it. But I, I do believe masks and with the fiberglass dividers, which we also use in the cafeteria, largely, we can come close.
Can I move the question?
Sure, absolutely.
I'll move the question to vote.
Okay, so, any more discussion? Where's the motion? Is there a mark? That was for the four days.
Correct.
That was like an hour ago, wasn't it?
Good discussion.
Sorry. You moved the question. Thank you, Sabrina. All in favor of the four days a week? Signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstained? Opposed? Okay. Thank you for moving the question. I know, you're a lot, it's so long ago.
And I just thank Mr. Chase for looking into that and really being creative and looking at how we can still distance our students, but have them return. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Creative.
Creative.
Excellent. Mr. Phillips, you have anything you'd like to add to yours, sir?
Um, I would just add, today was a day that students.
He's talking, but I'm not hearing him. Hold on a second. Hold on, hold on, sir.
Okay.
There you go. We got you.
Okay. Today was the day that our kids returned after being remote for the past week, and we've spent a lot of time in the past week chasing down kids that, they call it ghosting. They're, you know, they have a, they have an emoji up on the screen, but they're nowhere to be found when you ask them a question. So we're glad to see them in there, four days at the level that we have now. We are holding our breath to see if there is a bump after the holidays, and we're really anxious to see the vaccine available. Yeah, I wouldn't want to go any more than we are now. The other piece, I talked to the bus driver this afternoon. If we're going to have more kids across the district riding the bus, you know, that's, that's a concern. So the more we can do to encourage parents to transport, the better. That's it.
Well, and I, I see that we received some money from Shaw's, and I just wanted to follow up a little bit on that. Was that something you were surprised by, or were you expecting that?
Oh, we were really pleased. It was a surprise. I think they've funded other community organizations in the past, and this year, they, out of the blue, called and offered us that five thousand dollars, which we'd like to put towards the outdoor classroom that we'll work on again in the spring.
That's, that's, that's really good. And the, the other thing, we got a gift as well from, I'm not sure, acknowledge it here, but Cottage Hospital, this is for the high school, they, they gave eleven hundred and twenty dollars to the JAG program, the backpack program. And I'm thinking, wow, we're getting some nice communities being very supportive. That's wonderful.
Great.
And, and Mr. Ross, I wonder if he had anything he'd like to add, sir?
Uh, yeah. I, I wanted to address the, the weaknesses. I think, I think we were asked what our weaknesses were. Can you hear me okay?
We can, we can.
Okay.
Good evening.
The, you know, I think, I think we have more pluses than, than, or strengths than weaknesses. One of the, one of the biggest strengths we have is, are their teachers, our educators. They're following the guidelines when they go home. You don't think they're traveling, so I, I think they're, they're really, they're, they're being very unselfish and sacrificing a lot of their time, for example, taking extra lunch duties to help us maintain our guidelines in the classrooms. You know, the one thing that we've, we've kind of used, developing our, our health and safety guidelines is we're just trying to reduce the chance of the spread as much as possible. You know, nothing's going to be perfect. And I, and I think that, that's what we have going for us at the elementary school, is just maintaining those guidelines and following them. I was out at recess today and maybe had to tell one or two kids to just pull the mask up over their nose. They're wearing it outside, running around, whether they're alone or not. In school, they have their mask on, except when they're eating. So the, the, this, the kids are really adhering to those guidelines also. So I'm, I've been, we've been very pleased by that, and I think very fortunate with that, and, and I think that's really contributed to our low numbers. Knock on wood, not, try not to jinx us. That was it. I can't hear anybody, so if you're asking me something, I don't know.
Want to add anything, or? Yeah, actually.
He was here.
Yeah, he was, yeah. So we're good with the rest? We, thank you all so much. Tuition agreements and rates. Okay, so that's. There we go. So we haven't voted to do anything with tuition rates for this coming year. Last year, we did a one percent increase, if I'm understanding what I see here. At least for this current year that we're in. And I guess there's, there's, there's always pros and cons that you, in theory, can increase your rates, and then we're also talking about trying to retain some of our tuition students from Warren, who are shopping around. So sometimes increasing your costs isn't without repercussions, so just. So just, now what? Anybody have any thoughts?
We've made that argument for years to keep our tuition rates low. But at the end of the day, outside of Benton, all these other towns, the kids choose which school they want to go to regardless of the cost. You know, they're not choosing their school based on tuition. The school boards may choose to, you know, allow other schools. I mean, we already heard that Rivendell is going to set their rate, what, $200 or something? 500 lower than ours, no matter what we set ours at. And a lot of times we've used Lisbon as a litmus test. But really, I mean, we even went through the time when we were talking about maybe giving kids their own computer. I mean, we've done a lot of different things to incentivize. But at the end of the day, I mean, the rate's the rate. It's more of the the burden it is on our sister towns, you know, too, with a bigger increase or lower. And that's what we kind of said last year. But I don't, Kathy, do you make a recommendation on an increase? Do you have an increase that you're recommending? No, you don't want to, or you do want to? Because it seems like you've been urging us to increase them.
I I think, you know, it definitely, you know, looking at the rates that you have, they are relatively low. And, you know, we look, like you said, Lisbon, you know, they're at 16,8. That's a whole thousand dollars more than what we're charging right now. Comparative to cost per pupil, which fluctuates, you know, it's pretty low. It's tough. I can tell you that, you know, to raise it, you know, to do a 3% increase, that's going to be about a $40,000 increase in the revenue line.
How many percent increase?
About 3%.
3% is 40,000.
Yeah, so one and a half will be another 20,000. So if you look at it that way.
What we're not talking to is we have all those great discounts that we give as well. Those are the things that incentivize. So they're getting those, you know, big discounts like Benton. What's the, if you're 100% of your kids come, is it 10%? 10%, right? And I realize that, you know, an increase is hard. But I mean, we're going, we're proposing a monster budgeting. I mean, not budget increase, but tax increase in the town of Haverhill. I think this is the kind of year when you say fair is fair, that we have some kind of, you know, moderate increase in the tuition rate. So I don't think 3% is unreasonable. So I'll make a motion that we increase our tuition rates by 3%.
But this board, I have a few more questions.
Well, wait, 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 let's get the motion seconded. I have trouble not tracking what we're doing without that. So is there a second to John's motion for 3%?
Kathy, what's the competition doing others?
Can we get a second?
Oh, sorry.
All right, Don, you're on.
What's the, who else has these kind of schools and how much is everybody else charging? I know we talked about Lisbon being a thousand dollars more, but are there other schools that we're worried about competing against?
Now, it's on, it's on Kathy's seat. Here, you can have mine. I circled the ones on the right that we need to worry worry about.
Okay.
So in the past, we've had, in the past couple of years, and now I don't have it in front of me, but I recollection is like we've had 1%, 1 and 1/2%. A few years ago, we did a 3, I think. Is that, okay? 2014. So, so our tendency has been like 1, 1 and 1/2. And I would certainly agree that we shouldn't do nothing. So presently, we're talking about 3%. Any more discussion?
Yes, I'm still looking at this form. So the high school is at 16,342. Am I reading this right? With a 3% increase, it would be 16,342. And that's lower than all these other ones. Well, well, there's Rivendell, which is 15,76. And I'm questioning whether it shouldn't be higher. We have a new facility, for starters. And I think I find myself in agreement with John, which is-
What?
I know.
Hold on, where?
I mean, we've got a new facility. These other rates are higher than- That's what I'm thinking. And like I said, we have a new facility and I don't really care what Rivendell does. And I also think John's right. I don't think the kids are going to decide based on what the, you know, what their rates are. And I think the parents, some may have some influence on them as to the rates. But I don't know, I think we should just look at it rather than saying how much it's going to increase. I think we should look at what the competition is doing and then go from there. These numbers are all way higher than ours, even with a 3% increase.
Anybody else?
These towns looking at major tax rate increases themselves this year?
Some are, but some didn't get as much of of the additional adequacy fund. So it's not as drastic. Others are, other of the small village schools, their budgets are impacted by tuition because they're all tuition and transportation and special ed that really makes up most of their budget. I mean, sometimes, sometimes it's advisable to have incremental increases, you know, plan for something. You could do 3% for the next three years if you wanted to. But when you have someone, we had Bath one year had a 9% increase that came out after their budget was passed for for Lisbon. And it left them reeling, you know? And what Lisbon did was they just, they just raised it to be more competitive, no matter what that cost was. And it left a really bitter taste in in the Bath taxpayers.
So devil's advocate, because you also represent other schools in the district, is 3%. Do you think that'll be offensive? I, it doesn't seem it to me, but I just thought I'd see if you have a-
No, I mean, 3% is, I think 3% has been typical for many other districts when you've been conservative. I mean, you had a zero increase in 2017, a zero increase in 2019. So they're, they're a little bit used to you being conservative. I don't think, I don't think 3% is-
I'd like to also point out, though, that these are their current rates, right, Kathy? This isn't, if they have an increase, so Lisbon could have a 3% increase, you know, and Rivendell already said they're going to increase to be 500 less than us. So, I mean, these are their current rates, not their increased rates. And we're looking, like Don was saying, if he's looking at our increased rate and it's still low, then this is it's a small increase that we've put off. And, I mean, obviously, I made the motion, I'm in favor of that. But I I do, I think it's hard. I mean, like Laurie said, maybe it'd be better to do a 3% over the next, you know, next year as well and say, you know, to get us up to that point, you know, and which would be a 6% increase, you know, total next year.
We can address that next year.
Yeah, well, we could, or we could do it upfront, you know, for planning. But I think just the 3% now is probably enough. And I can already see Benton and Warren, they're going to, you know, but we need it.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not like we're trying to profit. We're still not quite charging our actual costs, so. Nate, did you?
Yeah, we discussed this, was it at the budget, 2018, we discussed tuition rates? And Rivendell's is set at $100 less than ours, correct? No matter what we checked, Rivendell's, that's there, but all same. And I think Sabrina, you were I think I seem to remember it was you that made the comment, it's some kind of offhand that we should set ours at $100 less than Plymouth, right? And honestly, something like that doesn't actually sound too horrible to me. Like, if we, I mean, not, I'm not saying we actually do that, but because that would be in a huge increase. But, yeah, I think the 3% year over year saying, you know, over the next several years, we are going to increase 3%, 3%, 3% on top because, as Don said, we have a new facility. We just spent a whole bunch of money to improve our building. And, you know, we're spending that money. We should expect that if they want to send their students to our new new building, you know, it costs more now. It's a, it's a nicer building, it's a better, you know, the idea is we've just improved the quality of our education overall with a new facility. You know, I don't know what, I guess my other question was, you know, what, what percentage of students Warren and Bath send to us currently? I think Warren was near 100%, aren't they? No.
Kathy has that, so. And of course, 100%. And Warren has about 18 kiddos. Uh.
It's a small handful that go to Plymouth and a handful that go to one. I mean, how many do?
Is it?
Yeah.
Way more than 50.
Oh, 67% is there.
And then Bath, there you go.
Two thirds.
And pardon me, Bath, 64% go here.
Okay. So I mean, and the, if we increase by 3%, would you, I mean, you and Laurie, would you expect that number to drastically drop? Or do you think it would be about the same? I mean, do you think if we increased by 3%, they would switch up and say, okay, now we're going to Bath? Or, I mean, to Lisbon from Bath or to-
I think John's right in that, you know, kids pick the school not for, not for tuition.
Right.
They'll be grumbling. And and actually, you know, we heard about it at all of the March meetings last year about, I was excited, we got funding, construction, school building, and they're like, oh, and they're going to jack up our tuition rates. So I think having 3% is still relatively conservative. You know, what would 5% be? 5% would probably-
Well, the motion, the motion's for 3. I just wanted to see if we're, any more discussion on the 3?
No, I just want to point out that for Piermont and Warren, they actually pay higher for their elementary students to go to school than they do for the students to go here. And usually, it's the opposite where elementary school is lower cost than high school. So they pay approximately mid 16,000. But then to come to Woodsville High School, they pay almost $1,000 less to come here.
Right.
Well, that's what they're charging. And no, but but Piermont pays for their own student, is that much money?
All right, anybody else? I don't know where he went. Maybe. He's gone home. He didn't say anything. I didn't ask for a pass. Oh, I'm kidding. I think we just Okay, all in favor of the motion on the floor, 3% increase, say aye. Any, anyone oppose? There we go, passes.
And we got to this topic. Can I just point out something? Last month, we talked about the agreements with the schools and just really sticking to if it's, you know, their discount. So I kind of wanted to make a recommendation that if, instead of the 100%, because I understand students move in and out of districts and it's hard to sometimes navigate that or keep track of that. If we were to do like a 95 or 90%, 100% and not the discount, because I was I really reflected on how we aren't necessarily charging certain districts. We're charging, we're giving them the discount when actually some of them don't deserve to get the discount.
That was actually going to be my next-
Oh, you want to add your thoughts to that then?
On that topic, yeah.
Did you find yours on?
Especially where we're talking about Warren, because I think what we discussed last at the budget meeting was that they're getting that 10% discount currently, are they not? Warren, and they're only sending 67. Well, that's right. And that, that's what I, I think Sabrina and I are kind of on the same page here. We need to stick to our guns on that one. If it's, if they're only sending 67%, then they don't qualify for a 5% discount.
Sounds like a valid one, I'm sure.
I think it was a vote.
So this was before my time.
If they consent less than 10%, I mean, less than 100% 10% discount?
That's what, that's what was negotiated with that.
But it, but it timed out. I think, wasn't this the last year or that? And the whole reason of that was, I think we were trying to head off them building their own. Was it, was it then? Was it when they were considering building that and we were trying to entice them? And so we gave them a deal and they built.
Warren was trying, was telling, if we did, there was kind of a, they were going to try to send 100% of their high school students here. And then something happened. You were still the principal at Warren. And then there was something to do where then there were some exceptions being made for people who were going to pay their own tuition. And it must have gotten foggy somewhere, but they were supposed to be sending 100% of their high schools, eligible high school students here if we gave them some discount rate. And it seems like it must have gotten convoluted, you know, screwy somewhere along the way.
I, I think one of the considerations, I'm pretty clear that, one of the considerations was that if a student had already enrolled in Plymouth, we'd let them finish their career there. So there was that, but that should time out in more than three years.
Yes.
So, but I remember us doing that.
Well, that's true. That was probably the only consideration, so something didn't get done right compared to what Warren did.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. I think that should have, can we research that a little bit and make sure we're?
The other thing I think we discussed at the meeting is that you said there are no other districts that give discounts, correct? Or are there?
Benton gets a discount because they send us 100, but they would have anyway.
Not that we give a discount to their, other districts that they might tuition to. Are there any others that give a discount for attendance rates?
Oh, oh, I thought you meant other districts that sent to us.
Does Lisbon give a discount if certain percentage of Bath students go? Or does Rivendell or Plymouth?
A couple of them do, but it's around 4% or less. That was the best offer that Lisbon had given Bath a number of years ago.
Significantly less than what we're-
And we were saying, oh, wow, you know, we send 100% to Woodsville, we get 10%, but they weren't budgeting. And then they went up 9% on their tuition rate in one year. And we got the notice after the budget, after March.
John, let's make a one point on this. School boards have the ability to kind of push where the kids, the options the kids have, which then can also go to the voters. And then the families have the decision on which one they choose. And I mean, there's tons, I mean, I talked to a ton of people about what other areas are doing. And the, you know, every town, you know, they're, they're doing a little something different to try to attract students or what they're doing within their town. I guess it's my understanding, some towns will just pay, if you want to send your kid to any school, we'll give you the $15,000 and you pick your school. It's just, there's a lot of different things going on out there. These discounts were put into play, what, 20 something years ago as a good business move by some, you know, and I mean, they're there to incentivize, especially towns like Benton, to stay at 100% and not, you know, go into an agreement with Profile or go into an agreement with Land or somewhere else. And, you know, they've, I think they've been kind of working for us. We've been doing a good job, you know, we keep the relationship with Benton. We've been getting a fair amount of tuition students. And I guess while I got the microphone, I do want to point one thing. We don't just have a new building here. We've also, we've got the Cisco program. We've brought some new programs into high school that are really offering a better, you know, better opportunities for these tuition students. We've increased the amount of laptop computers available, some of the other technology things. So there are a lot of other great things that we've done here outside of just a new building that do merit costs to the taxpayers.
I'm not opposed to the discount. I'm just saying whatever the discount is, we need to be consistent and fair for all the schools. So that's, I think, was my point. So instead of just saying 100% of students, because we could have a student move in from, you know, out of state into Warren that chooses to go to Plymouth, I don't think then we say in March, you don't get that discount. So for me, I'm comfortable saying between 90 and 100% of students that attend, that's the discount. I think what the discount is and what that looks like is a different question. But I just wanted to be really clear that I felt like we needed to be consistent and fair for all our sending schools.
Nathan, and I, and I've got a head nod that they're agreed to look into, see where we're at with all that research. I think most of that should have passed, should have timed out by the law. I think that was item six on our agenda. I think the discussion on the Warren articles has already taken place when we did Kathy's discussion. And I think the annual school district budget hearing and meeting dates was covered already with Laurie's report. So that leaves us the Student Activity Funds Management, which I think was pretty straightforward, cut and dry concept that certainly. So it's, it's a policy JJF regarding student activities funds in the past. At the, when the graduating class left the school, if there was any money left in it, it went to the school. And we've had- And we've had classes say that they've raised money and would like to use it for like a, some kind of a get together afterward or something of that nature. They'd like to be able to do that, and the present policy doesn't allow it. So, so this J J F policy that you have in front of it, the bold portion, is designed to recognize that situation and allow them to have some account set up for future activities. So I think I'd make a motion that we accept this as a first reading for policy J J F. All in favor? Anyone oppose? That's discussable. Any nominations, resignations that we have? You want to push your microphone? Please, please.
All right. So Russ Wilcox has resigned as the girls' basketball coach. Had a nice email conversation back and forth with him. Russ is a great guy. He's done a wonderful job with our girls, and we will miss him. But he's handing the torch. Steve Colby and Tori Kloss will coach this season, and we wish the girls' team and Russ, and Russ well. And Jamie Vance has been our clerk and bookkeeper here at the high school. She has resigned, and we have Denise Riordan had been the long-term sub for, for Jamie this fall, and Denise has been doing a wonderful job, so we have offered her that position. So those two resignations, I wanted to bring to your attention.
All right, thank you. Any other business?
One thing, the architects, Benwell, who's looking at the elementary school project. There were two pieces, structural engineering and civil engineering, that were not included in the RFP, and they said, given the, given the way that it's built and that unique bus loop that's in the front, that they recommended bringing the structural and civil engineers in. We could have gone out through RFP, we asked them to do it, and they have brought two, two firms that they have worked with. One was the low bidder, the other one was the only bidder, but one that they work with, and I think one is fifty-five hundred and the other is twenty-eight hundred.
So the twenty-eight hundred was the structural engineering, and I absolutely agree with that because it, it's been a concern of mine from the get-go about whether or not, if, if we did a major thing at the elementary school. And it wasn't structurally sound, I think we wouldn't look really great. But the other one, the civil engineering, basically, that was all site surveying work and layout. I wish I'd had time to find out more about why, do you have a sense of why? Because what, what we're asking for is like a, a cost to bring the school into compliance and code, up to code, and to make it serve the needs of our students. I guess, I wish I'd thought to reach out before tonight, but I, I'm not really sure what the point of that fifty, fifty-five hundred is.
So the, in the description of the estimating and the scoping. It's that if they're selected as the final, if they're selected, they will develop final conceptual site plans. And will prepare an outline specification for the project, which will identify key parts of the proposed site work, using contract or pricing for budgetary purposes. They'll prepare a brief letter, a report outlining the required permitting, recommended additional services, if any, and a conceptual opinion of the cost for the site work. They'll review more detailed site work, construction cost estimates provided by the architect, and provide comments on the estimate. It may not be that much because they've, I mean, they've given us their, their proposed compensation. I have most of this. They'll also do a base plan, ortho, photo, which is aerial imagery. They'll confer with public works. They'll could do onsite review for existing conditions. And they'll prepare an AutoCAD format and share the, with the architect for planning. They've not included a survey. So it's the conceptual site plan stuff, which is one of the biggest concerns up there.
Do you have a sense of, of the timing of any of this? I, I mean, I, I don't know why, but they keep on talking about March meeting, and I think we have no intention of bringing us to the March meeting anyway, so.
No, but I think what we said was, we wanted to be able to inform taxpayers at the March meeting, whether it's just a flyer or something in the mail of where we are with the project. And Benwell wants to be able to give you their absolute best estimate, and they said they really need the input from these two engineering points of view to be able to give you accurate.
Twenty-seven?
Was for your.
That, that was, the RFP was twenty-seven to do what they were going to do, and they've identified the needs for a couple of other items here, so. So, what's your wishes?
The architect is requesting it and they need it. Do we have a choice?
Always have a choice. Yes or no are the two choices come to mind right at the moment.
I guess I'd like to know what's the, what can they not do if we don't approve the fifty-five? I mean, we don't have to do it tonight. I mean, I agree with you, the structural one, if there's structural concerns that there, and you need, I mean, because we have had some with the snow load and the changes, you know, putting the insulation in. You know, allowing more snow to build up and yada, yada. I mean, there's a long story behind all that, but that, I, I wholeheartedly believe that the structural part is valid. But the, you know, redesigning the parking lot and the drives, you know, and, you know, that, I mean, that might be able to wait until we're a little more closer to saying, yeah, we think we're going to do something, or we want to, you know, right? So I think we could hold off on the fifty-five, on the twenty-eight. So I'll make a motion that we approve the twenty-eight, and not approve the fifty-five tonight.
Second, anybody? Any other discussion on that?
I will just add that this was the one that they had three bids, and this was the low bidder.
Which, which one?
The civil. It went up, it went up to like twenty.
Wow.
I know, but like you said, you can look at it again.
I think we need to understand why we need it.
I, I think between now and the next meeting, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to maybe revisit that and, and get a little better handle on it. Because I, I, I apologize. I probably should have had time to look into that, give you a better answer, but I'm uncomfortable as are you, I think. So, the motion's made. Seconded, all in favor?
Can I ask what the motion is?
The motion was to approve the structural engineering for twenty-eight? And which, which, I think John hit it on the head when he talked about snow loading and stuff. In case you didn't know, the elementary school roof structure was changed from the original construction. Originally, it was just a, I don't know the name of it, but it was like a thin board. And the way you kept the snow loading off the roof was a lot of heat melted from inside the building. There was no insulation. And in the interim, you know, since then, they've added a couple of inches of styrofoam, at least. And if you go by now, you'll see that, when we do have snow, not, maybe not this year, but when we do have a lot of snow, it builds up significantly on there, and then it rains. And you've got a lot of load on that roof that wasn't, it wasn't designed at all, in my view, and that's the point of the structural engineering.
Yeah, the purpose of my question was if that was a low bid, should we, I'd be inclined to put it at a higher amount, like four thousand, if you feel after reviewing that paperwork or documentation, that that's not the best person to go with or best company to go with. That was the only thing I was thinking. That was the only.
Not twenty-eight.
Sorry, I answered the wrong question.
For structural.
Okay, and can we get a second on the revised? Thank you. You good with that? It's even less, so. All right, all in favor of this motion at this time? Anyone oppose? Super. I see a hand up there. Let's see if we can get you turned on. Hang on a sec.
Can you hear me?
Hang on. There.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, thanks. So I have a few things. So during this Zoom meeting like this, it's kind of hard to understand and hard to hear some of the things that you're saying. So before you get ready to do your vote on some of your motions, if you can just repeat the motion, say the motion is, da-da-da, you know, not just say, all in favor of John's motion.
Okay.
And also, if you can.
Thank you.
And if you can also tell the results of the vote, you know, four said yes and three said no, you know, just kind of seeing hands kind of go up and down, it's hard for people to see and understand what's going on.
Good positive input. Thank you, Lauren.
The other thing too, um, did the high school, did you guys agree to go to four days for the high school?
We did.
Okay, because that was hard to hear and understand as well. And is the informational meeting, did you guys decide on March third or fourth?
Third.
Thank you. And then, right at the very beginning of the meeting, it was, the hearing was hard as well. What, I didn't hear what you said about the naming of the high school gym. What, what did you say about?
Well, there, there had been a concept that was approached to, was brought to us at our previous meeting.
Right.
And we've heard enough from the public and so on, and, and we're not moving forward with that.
Okay, okay. All right, that's all I want here. All right, thank you. That's all I had.
Well, thank you. So, the next meeting is February first. I don't have to tell you where because we're all in the mall here, I guess, so. And I do, we do have a non-public session for, is it personnel, Laurie, is it? Okay, we have a non-public for personnel to follow at this point, so we thank you all for your attendance and participation.
Thank you, Eric.